Let us pray. While we come again once this evening, thanking you for our great city. And once again, come tonight to strive to make the right decisions on behalf of our citizens. Give us wisdom and direction in our proceedings tonight. Bless our city manager, our staff, and employees, this board, and most of all, the people of our community, and those in attendance. Be with us tonight, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to receive the final agenda. All favor. Close lines. Motion to receive five minutes for last meeting. Any discussion? All favor. Aye. Close lines, aye. Collection of AmeriPro 10. We've run a little late on doing that. Do I have a motion?
Nomination.
Nomination. Nomination of Mr. Perkins, leading vote together, which is the one that wants ads.
I say the second.
Any discussion? Should be a long discussion.
I hope not.
All favor.
Aye.
Close lines, aye.
Thank you all.
Get back. Hearings and reports, commissioners.
I just want to welcome everybody this evening. It's kind of a packed house. I want to say thanks to the firefighters who hosted a awards and recognition dinner at the Ashland Transportation last Saturday. It was a great time, good food, and families together, and I think we had ten retirees there also. I hope we have that as an annual thing, Chief. It was a really good thing. And also, I want to give kudos out to our Parks Department. I was walking around there the other day, things are starting to turn, and lo and behold, Little League season is among us. And they're going to have tryouts up here at the Alvario Park this coming Saturday. I told the mayor it was a historic day because it's no longer national and American. They've merged. So, you know, they're going to have tryouts, there are probably hundreds of kids going to try out their Saturday. So, we have four promotions tonight in the fire department, and I'm proud of them. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I just want to mention, this week, I had the good fortune of meeting with the primetimers at Unity Baptist, and one of their members, a guy by the name of Ralph, I'm sure if you've seen my Facebook, you know I'm talking about citizen that is part of Bill Ashland, and was out, he's about eighty, and he's out cleaning our streets voluntarily, and it just says a lot about commitment to the people in our community to making our city the best it could possibly be. And I just want to thank him, and thank all those countless others in our city who do it without any fanfare for the veteran of all, and I'm deeply very proud of the city as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything? Okay. First thing I'd like to do, and Faith Fountain would come up in front, I'd like to make a little presentation to her. If you can come around. Faith is a local lady who was in our Miss Kentucky pageant, and I see why. I haven't met her before. Nice to see you, I neglected you. I have a proclamation I'd like to read and present to you tonight. Whereas Faith Fountain is a graduate of Kentucky Christian University, and has promoted her career with a master's degree in mental health and addiction counseling. Whereas she's employed by Pathways in Ashland, Kentucky as prevention educator, and volunteers her time to educate high school and middle school students to avert violence and set healthy boundaries. Whereas she also was selected Miss Continuality in the Miss Kentucky Pageant, which is awarded for caring and encouragement, and a whole bunch of other things, I know. So, I'm pretty proud to make mention, getting that award, trust me. And were you still like that when they did call you as the winner of the whole thing? That's where it really pays off. And whereas she extends this to others in her continued service in educating young adults about addiction, violence, and how to get back to the community. She believes everyone has a purpose. Now therefore, I Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Ashland, today, Thursday, 26th to 20th day of February, 2019. Thank you for being here. So, are there any engineers on duty now? We're going to have four new ones. I've never seen that before. You've got one on duty? Oh, man. Well, you'll have some partners there in a minute. I just thought, I pay attention to these and read them very closely, and who they are, and try to check how many years you've been with us, and things like that. But I thought it was kind of odd, and so I better hurry up and get you guys in. One of Miss' new engineer will be Sam Horn, and Sam has with, if you have somebody else with me, you need to tell them. And I want you all to come up, family, friends, whatever. Mackenzie Horn, Audrey Horn, Ellie Horn, and his mom Kathy Horn. I think it's great that families come and friends come, because you're in public safety. You know, we're the safest city with the police and fire we have in any city in America. And just like our police officers go out every morning, you guys get up every morning on duty, or all hours of the night, to make sure all of our citizens are safe, their property is safe. We don't take that for granted. I promise you, our citizens don't. But a little bit they do, but that's because of you, your training, your hard work, what you do in the community when there is a fire, and help us so much in fire prevention. So, you know, when they take you for granted a little bit, that's okay. That is not a bad thing, because they know we have outstanding public safety. I'm very proud of you. I'd also like to have Will McKenzie, Stephanie McKenzie, his wife, Violet Smith, please come up, and Christine McKenzie. Yes, ladies, you're going to have to do it. And they're thinking they wouldn't have come if they knew I was going to make them come up here. Too bad. We're proud of every family member, friend, associated with these fine men. Our new engineer, Scott Powell. Jamie Powell. Kaylin Powell, daughter. Zane Powell, a son. Harper, daughter. Rick and Kathy Powell, parents. Are they here? Please come up. Connie Jones, mother-in-law. You sure? Heather Powell, sister. Is Heather here? I love, this is the way it ought to be. When you win an award, get a promotion, the family needs to be part of it. Dave Miles. Samantha Miles', wife. Jacob Miles', son. Julia. Spencer Bean, cousin. Are they here? Steven Susie Coons, uncle and aunt. Great. Glad you're here. Come on up. Now, the four candidates for promotion, please raise your right hand. And when I say "do you," you each pronounce your own name out loud, okay? Do you solemnly swear to continue to serve the citizens of the City of Ashland in your new capacity and compassionate manner with courage and integrity, to put others before you, and to accept the sacrifices needed to serve our community. And do you swear to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Ashland, shall help you God? If so, answer "I will." I'm very proud of all of you. Get back to it. Thank you for being here. Thank you, appreciate the time. Thank you. See if you may be tempted to take it home during the day and practice. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for listening. You guys stay safe and keep us safe, okay? That's the charge I do tonight. Thank you. You can have a seat. Mr. Cantor, you think they look like they fit to be held?
They look very.
You would know. we're happy to have you. Glad you're here, especially nice supporting these new engineers. You guys that are other positions, thank you every day for what you're doing for us. We can't do it enough, but no, no, we just care about you every day. Stay safe. This part of media is public participation. If you have an item you'd like to bring before the board, we'd ask you to come up in front of the podium, and give your name, address, and keep your comments five minutes or less.
Whitney Lowe with Ashland Motion. We're at 1509 Winchester Avenue. I'm here tonight to invite downtown business owners, employees, and those who are invested in downtown Ashland to attend a first Friday open forum on Monday, March 4th. We have two meeting times for that to accommodate business hours. So, a morning meeting at 10:00 a.m., and an evening meeting at 6:00 p.m. And both of those meetings are held at the Ashland Boyd County Tourism Office. First Friday, it's a celebrated community event, and has a long history, and through its history, it certainly has evolved, but at the heart of it, it's always been about our downtown businesses. And we encourage the community to use it as an opportunity to support those local businesses and to shop local. So, as we grow, we want to be able to maximize that opportunity for our downtown businesses, and we know that those employers and those business owners have the best insight as to how we can grow and how we can achieve more for them. So, we hope that they come out on Monday at either of those times and just share their insights. Like I said, it's an open forum. There's no agenda that day. We just want to hear from people and get an honest feedback about how we can grow and improve, and let those business owners really thrive and make the most of the event.
Well, I'm sure you'll have a good turnout, and you do a great job with it as it is, but I know everything can be improved, and hopefully, especially our business people, will try to get the two cents in.
We hope so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to appear before the board? Thank you all for being here, everyone. You guys stay safe. Thank you. Old business out of May.
Mayor, I think the old business, we skip the city manager.
I did that on purpose.
Oh.
Why do you keep calling my hand on things? He's a new citizen. Well, he's not new now, he's been here a couple months, I know. Thank you, Council. Sorry.
Yeah, don't worry, clear. Couple items. First off, administratively, some changes to the agenda from what we'd sent out earlier. Consent item number 10, emergency declaration. Just to let the public know, this is in line with the Ashland Boyd County and Kallisburg Emergency Management to compete for federal and state funding. Secondly, we posted on Facebook today, an announcement about Skyline Drive. I'd like to read this verbatim. Due to emergency conditions, Skyline Drive between Woodhaven Drive and Elwood Drive will be closed to all traffic beginning at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow evening. The closure is expected to last no more than four days. Residential traffic from Woodhaven Drive to Floyd Street will only have access via Floyd Street, and residential from Elwood Drive to Raglan Road will only have access from Raglan Road. Again, we expect it to last no more than four days. As soon as road conditions are repaired, we'll reopen it. Just to let you know, there's a road slippage out there that is danger to the vehicles, and there's also a 12-inch water line that's under jeopardy also, that feeds Summit, among other locations, which would have a huge impact if we lost that water line on thousands of citizens. So, we're declaring emergency to get a repair on that. Next, if you could bring up the slide, please. Mayor Commissioners, I just wanted to share this with you. We had some complaints about fire hydrant repair in residential areas, and so, we realized collectively, we've not been tracking those due to per-item lists every year. And I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what the Water Department and the Fire Department have done. The Fire Department goes out every spring and tests all the fire hydrants in the city. Do a great job of that there. We're about to make an announcement on that, because you can't have discoloration in your water, for example, that can, you know, damage your laundry, things of that nature. We'll make announcements on Facebook on that here, coming up next month, Chief? Yeah, starting next month.
Well, actually, April.
In April, thank you.
Tomorrow is March.
But in May of 1877, we're identified as needing repair or replacement. You can see that 51 have been completed. The reason I took that picture is you can see an old fire hydrant in the upper left-hand corner of that first picture, and while the water distribution is trying to get repair parts, they can always find repair parts where they're really old, so sometimes they just have to be replaced. One that might jump out, too, is that removed to date, there's six between the Fire Department and engineering. They've determined that those are not a risk to any home or business, and can be removed safely. And then you see that we have 26 remaining. We're in the process of receiving bids for the replacement hydrants and the repair parts awarded. So, again, just wanted to share that with you. I do get a report from Water Distribution every week on the status of those. And with that, Chief, if you could come up? Are there any questions? Also, I wanted to initiate something tonight, to have the department heads come up periodically and give reports on their particular department, and Chief put together a quick briefing, just to give you an update for Mayor Commissioners and also the community on what's going on in the Ashland Fire Department.
Yeah, I was asked to kind of put together a little short presentation. This is kind of a short little thing about last year, what we did and stuff, so Ryan's going to be my clicker, so if you see me wave. Anyway, just as a reminder, our fire department's structure, we have 53 authorized personnel. We have two chief officers, administrative assistant, 46 members in our fire suppression, two members in our fire prevention bureau, and then we're short two firefighters. We started the process just yesterday with the written test, so we should have it completed sometime in the next few months, we can get full of the staff. We're housing in our three stations, and this is what we currently have in them. Three fire pumpers, a rescue truck, ladder truck, two reserve pumpers, four staff vehicles, two boats, three equipment trailers, and we still have our 1922 anti-pump. That's getting renovated, a few parts, it should be up and running here, hopefully in the near future, we can put it back in the brig and have it on display a little better. Put down that incident history back to 2000. You can see, we've moved from 1,200 incidents a year up to this last year, almost 2,000, which is about a 63% increase since 2000, and we've had about over 4,000 truck movements for those 2,000 incidents. And then I kind of broke it down, I hope you can see it, but over our incidents over the last few years, the big thing that people ask us about fires nationwide, fires are going down. But if you'll notice in a rescue and EMS, they've almost doubled. So, in a slide here in a minute, I'll show you how we revamped our operations and kind of take care of that. The most important number probably that everybody's worried about is our response time. How long does it take us to get there? So, if you, from the time we get the call to the time we have the first truck on the scene, we're averaging three minutes and 45 seconds to get the first ones there. National standards, they're going with four minutes, so we're right there on what the national standard is. I want you there with the first on the scene. Just a little graph on the bottom, it's kind of interesting, you know, our busiest day last year was Thursday. That kind of fluctuates sometimes, but it seemed odd that Thursday would be our busiest day for some reason. Okay? A lot of training goes on. Last year, we logged over 10,000 hours of training for our guys, and that was in 152 different categories. Average number per member is about 230, and the requirement for Kentucky is 100 hours to keep our certifications up. Mentioned earlier, you know, how our fires nationwide are going down and our rescues are going up, but we, a couple years ago, started a program to where we converted one of our engines into a rescue truck. With grant money and some budget money, we've been able to equip it with quite a bit of equipment that handles all the rescues. And you can see a list there of the different disciplines that we've trained guys in that we can respond to. Our biggest addition this last year, as you can see, I think we had three of them here tonight, so, but about eight months, we had eight different babies be born, so, something to be proud about. Okay? And then, want to look at what we want to look at this year, and one of the things we want to work upon is replacing our 1993 pumper, which is half the 20 years that they recommend that we keep it in frontline, so we're going to start working on replacing that. We want to improve our quality of training classes, we get more hands-on, try to acquire some props to do that. And we're also going to work toward improving our ISO rating. Right now, we're one in 1,060 departments in the country that are Class II. Class I has about 132 departments in it, and that's out of almost 50,000 departments. So, something to really be proud of, we're in the top, you know, 1,000 in the country of being graded for a fire department.
And what's that stand for, Chief?
You just asked me.
As you typically ask.
Insurance Service Organization.
Which, though, I know.
Which is an organization.
I do have insurance. I don't think people realize the break we get in Ashland.
Insurance companies use that to kind of, you know, determine your insurance rate. We're graded, 50% of the score comes from the Fire Department. I think it's 30% or 40% comes from our Water Department, and then the other comes from our Despac Center and our Falls. We all three get graded, and then we get up to top of the score.
And like, how many hydrants you have, and how far they are apart, is part of that equation?
Well, a lot of it has to do with your gallons per minute that you can get on the scene. So, you know, your large buildings and stuff, they look at different, how many hydrants is around it, and how much water would you get, you know, based on the square footage of the buildings, how much water you need for a fire there, and that's how they grade that. So, you know, hydrants has a big deal to do with it. That's just kind of a little short little thing about our department. If anybody had any questions, or try to make a brief.
One of the things I want to thank you all, and for the work that you do, and I think you all have really been out in the community, not just with your regular job, doing the things you have to do, but you've also been present, doing some things to help others, and I really appreciate that. And I really appreciate this report. I think it's important for the board to hear from the department heads, and I think it's important for the citizens to hear from the department heads, the really good work that they're doing, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Appreciate you all supporting me.
Well, John, we're a stewardship for theirs, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's all I have.
Okay. Appreciate it. Go back to his place again, or anybody? Second time around? That's pretty dangerous for me to do that, because sometimes people start thinking, "Hey, you know, by gosh, I do that wrong, I should have learned that." I forgot about that. Okay. Old business out of May, if the Council will allow me.
Old business is out of May.
An ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute mutual aid agreement between the City of Ashland and Kentucky Fire Department and Tri-State Airport towards fire rescue. Any discussion? All favor? Close lines, sign, and I'll be. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, "The City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Task Order Number 23 between the City of Ashland and Kentucky Strand Associate Think regarding the 2018 Annual Combined Sewer Overflow Reports for Department of Public Services Utility Operations in an amount not to exceed $15,000." Any discussion? We've used Strand for many, many years, and it's a pretty solid company, pretty solid. I know all over the state. All favor? Aye. Close lines, aye. Any other old business? Nothing? Consent agenda. Residents, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, January 28, 2019. Any second, Chief?
The only thing I want to say on this, I would ask that the board consider removing item four from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, so that I can vote on the rest of the consent agenda. I do have a conflict.
Sure.
Treat that as a motion, somebody else signed it back.
All favor? Aye. Anybody have another question, any parts of consent?
So, the resolution would be on the consent agenda with the removal of item four.
Okay. All favor? Close lines, aye. Item four on the consent agenda by itself, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? I recuse myself. Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. New business out of May. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "The City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute contract between the City of Ashland and BLK Construction LLC for all labor materials for miscellaneous concrete and asphalt repair work, for up to one year in the amount of $465,000, $465,070 for Department of Public Services and Utility Operations Convention, Voice Water Collection, and Water Distribution." I do have just a comment to make on this. I would like to get, like a monthly report to the Commissioners and the mayor on what we either completed, what we have ongoing, and some kind of targeted on different projects, so we kind of keep up on what's being done. And I know that the staff, the superintendents, and people involved have to keep a run in account of all this stuff.
This is a match contract that you wanted on the roads and cement, or that this isn't specifically required to, like, whether water on replacement, the road being replaced, or the sidewalk.
I think it's probably good to follow up, too. We've had some issues, I've had some citizens over some time have sidewalks that maybe we've forgotten about, and we've had to go back and get those, it seems like, so I still think, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Can you just send us off something, kind of give us completions and... All favor? Aye. I'll be. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "The City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, and Tri-State Construction Enterprises LLC in the amount of $58,058.58 for renovations in safety, harmony, and robust building number three, resulting in an ADA compliant transitional unit to be paid from Community Development Block Grant Funds for program year 2018 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Close lines, aye.
I recuse myself for that.
Okay. Third C. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "The City of Ashland, Kentucky, mending section 14 of the ordinance number 105, series 2000, previously amended, restricting animals within the city, commonly known and referred to as the Animal Control Ordinance." So, wait.
Second.
Second, I have some concerns. Um, before we amend this, I think we need to get the verbiage a little bit better. You know, I think when you say that an animal just needs adequate shelter, I don't think that does it. You know, we have been told by Kathy Queen that it need, the animals need three sides, uh, on a house or a building plus a floor plus a roof. And I think, you know, my idea of adequate shelter and somebody else's idea of adequate shelter is not the same. So, I think that it needs to be more specific, or we can't enforce the ordinances at all.
I think it's a fair point. So, so can we, would we want to clarify the language as, in the, in the ordinance as, as it is today?
I, I think if we're wanting to do that, we'd have, that'd be sufficient. It would be a significant enough change, we'd have to bring it back with the changes for another first reading. We'd obviously do that.
I mean, I think, I think that's your intent when you say sufficient. I think that, you know, going out to rural, can you see a doghouse? Or, or somebody's building a doghouse, I figure it'd have a floor and at least three sides on it. That's what I thought your intent was.
But it has to be spelled out to a lot of people because they don't get it.
Well, so the question would be, would, would, uh, would, would our animal control officer feel comfortable? Would he or she need that language specifically when trying to enforce the ordinance? And I also defer to our police department, would you, would you prefer something like that spelled out so that it's not so vague as to possibly say that the citizen can get away with having, you know, just a, a piece of plastic over a broken tree limb and calling that a shelter for a dog?
I, I'll, I'll have to think about that one because that, that's, that's kind of pretty broad there. I mean, as far as, you know, having, having, like, Mr. Moore said, having that ability to articulate or view what you actually see if we're there legally, um, versus something exact. And maybe, maybe more of a restriction, maybe place more of a difficulty on us. I, I, I know that sounds strange, but we, we, we've been talking about this and how things listed in the ordinance should be, you know, kind of broad, to give the ability for us to investigate and charge properly.
Make judgments.
Yeah. But if, once you start putting exact things on it, it may cause us a little bit difficult to get in and inspect. You know.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm certainly in favor of tabling this till we fill, we'll come up with the verbiage and all, and maybe get Kathy, Kathy Queen, uh, because she had offered her input.
And also, I think Carrie Clark had some, uh, some ideas too about this. And I think that we need to make sure that it's, that it's enforceable, but at least we need to make sure we're protecting the, the animals too from abuse and neglect.
Yeah, I mean, I, I totally agree with you, just sometimes the more restrictions may, it may cause us more, a little bit of difficulty. If, if, if you have, it may not be a perfect situation like that, you know.
I think that's what Officer, uh, Dave Brownman expressed at the last meeting, is that that gave them the latitude to do that. It's one of the reasons on this version why we took out the specific for vagina choke collars, because there are positions, my understanding, I haven't used them before, I really don't know, but I've been told that there are situations to control and train dogs with choke collars. So, if we say all choke collars are eliminated, and anybody with a choke collar is in violation of the city policy, and I don't think that's intended.
I use a choke collar, I use a pinch collar.
Well, I think, I think the, the original intent of the choke collar was, was when it's attached to a dog, to a chain in the yard versus maybe when you're walking, you know. Because you're not typically going to use a choke collar outside of that, walking the dog, right?
You wouldn't leave a choke collar on the dog all day, online. I mean, but some people do, you know, that's.
That's really, that's, and that's where we have to clarify, because it seems like, to Commissioner Steen's point, some people, it has to be spelled out exactly.
Let me give you a hypothetical. Say you came upon a, a dog with, uh, that had a house, but, but it didn't have a floor in it. What, what kind of fine would you give them if we specified it had to have a floor in it? What, what kind, what could you charge it with?
You know, you're looking at ten to twenty-five dollar kind of fine type situation. But is that necessarily, is that necessarily going to change the problem or change the situation right now? That's, you know.
Well, there's some dog owners that put heavy straw down and, and dogs.
That's, that's where I was kind of talking about, because, you know, your interpretation of, you know, of the flooring or a side.
Just on there.
Well, you know, what, what is that construction?
I had twelve lives, they all slipped on straw in an open barn. They didn't, they, that's how they all slipped, that's how they wanted to slip.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I'm saying, if, if it's challenged later on, if, you know, you go to court, the judge may value the, the interpretation of, you know, what we put in our ordinance as saying, well, that, in my opinion, that is more, you know, the straw is adequate enough.
Have we looked at, have we looked at, say, these?
Yeah, the, the language that we put in, in this amendment actually came from that Pennsylvania statute. And it talked, and that's why we added the language that said, uh, the housing would be sufficient to keep the, allow the animal to maintain normal body temperature and keep the animal dry. So, you know, you probably can't do that with an elastic sheet in the side. It's, it's going to get wet, it's not going to be able to maintain normal body temperature.
And the truth of it is, when I see dogs tied up and they have no shade in a hot summer day, to me, it's just as bad as a cold winter day. When they have no, no shade place to go, then they should have some kind of cover for them.
And again, that would probably be covered by this though, because the dog's not going to be able to maintain normal body temperature if it's.
Exactly.
And that's, under the same, under the same concept, that's why we took out the choke collar, et cetera. And it now currently reads that all dogs and cats shall be secured by an adequate collar. That gives the police and the animal control the ability to go and make a judgment call on the spot. Hey, you got a choke collar on a chain, that's not, that's not adequate, it's improper. Uh, if somebody's using it to train a dog down the street or whatever to control a big dog, then that's an adequate collar.
Well, to the commissioner's point though, you could, you could put the choke collar restrictions and so on only when they're on a tether, as opposed to.
Yeah. Would that be so much, would that, so, could we get through that today to get the ordinance in place?
I think that's still, it's, it's such a, it's such a material change, it's going to require us to come back with it, but, but we can do that.
Well, just, just make a motion table.
Commissioner, take place.
A second though.
Uh, all favor?
Uh, I mean, I don't have anything against it, I just want it to be clear and, and so, so it can be enforced.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about, because it, it, you know, you gotta have some latitude for every situation is different, rather than making it, you know, exact each time. Because you, you may walk into that situation with the, with the, the shelter meets the requirement, and, but maybe the condition of the dog is not. You see what I'm saying?
Anything, any other guidance, any other points you all, you thought needed to be maybe strengthened a little bit?
I thought it was good. I mean, I thought you did a lot of work on it, and you compared it with your professor that you talked about, that you carried, I thought was pretty clear.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't fishing for a gopin.
No.
Really?
No. I just wondered if there was anything else that we needed to look at.
You mentioned it last.
I think, I think, I think the issue with the collar is important enough to review, and, and I, I appreciate your time on it, and, and I appreciate this, this board and the mayor moving forward with it, because I think it is important.
I want shelter in bad weather, and I want shelter of some sort in hot weather.
Do we, do we think that the way it is right now, sufficient on the shelter, or do you think we ought to go back to the sides?
Is it still okay with that, or with it?
I was just kind of reiterating what Kathy Queen had said, but, you know, straw can be a, a floor in some cases too. And I think each different case, you know, you have to just look at it and see.
You know, in a situation too, when you say adequate shelter, you know, what if somebody? We do get calls on animals left in vehicles, you know, and it's out of the weather, and they may even leave a car running, which is illegal, but, you know, they turn the air conditioner on. At what point is that illegal? Other than they let the car, you know, it's maybe not damaging to the animal, but they create another violation, but, you know, they, they might become agitated or whatever, and why we couldn't do anything.
Right.
And I'd rather have that broad interpretation or the ability to articulate an issue.
I use straw in it, and I, because I generate heat, you know, it generates heat. Plastic doesn't generate heat.
Okay, we'll come back. I think I know what you want. And we'll get it out early enough, and hopefully if you have any comments, we can adjust it for the next first reading.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. I'll be.
Uh, an ordinance, the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance number eighty-seven, series of nineteen ninety-two, as previously amended by ordinance number twenty-nine, series of nineteen ninety-five, ordinance number one eighteen, series of two thousand two, and ordinance number eighteen, series of two thousand thirteen, which adopted the procurement regulations for the City of Ashland, Kentucky, uh, June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-two.
So move.
Second.
Major.
Uh, just to review, uh, as we discussed in the previous board of commissioner meetings, our bid pre-qualification disclosure statement is updated. It addresses substance abuse, safety and health programs, and equal opportunity. Also, we created the evaluated bid criteria. Further discussion, the ordinance language was added, further discussion at the last POC, the, uh, language is added mandating vendor performance evaluation, which has been done. And we've got latitude with those different forms depending on the project with the contractors that we can add or subtract on the evaluated bid per what type of project that it is. So, I think this, uh, I think this hits a nail on the head with this.
So, in this ordinance that we're enacting, it includes language that specifically states OSHA training? It states drug, drug mandatory drug testing?
No. What it specifically says is in the bidding qualifications, uh, when you, on the evaluated bid criteria, bidder, vendor has a substance abuse program that includes testing and treatment. Bidder, vendor has a written safety and health program that includes training, inspections, safety meetings, accident investigation, job site compliance procedures, and compliance procedures. Uh, that's similar language to what's in the pre-qualification disclosure statement. And on the EO, written procedures to ensure compliance with current federal and state wage and hour laws including employee eligibility to work and has a policy which provides equal employment opportunity. So, these are all the evaluated criteria that contractors can be graded on.
But just to clarify, we didn't really change the ordinance. The ordinance always said that the city manager had the authority to, to develop these criteria and so on, so we just had him do that, and then I think we put it on the consent agenda last time for you all to look at. So, the only actual, the change on this ordinance, Commissioner, is what you requested, a requirement that for each project, there would be an evaluation, a written evaluation performed, and that was kept in the records as a permanent record of each project.
We definitely want that. We always had work with comp obligation.
Sure.
Always had liability insurance.
Liability insurance. Indemnification. And the bigger projects will have a, a bid, bid bond and performance bond.
And we always had OSHA training in the record of it.
I don't think we, it's not a requirement, it's only evaluated bid, it's, it's, it's the things that mark you up if you have bad training, if you have drug test, testing. There was about ten or eleven criteria that we recognized as things that made for better contractors, and therefore contractors who's in bids may be evaluated, I mean, if they're not the lowest bid.
It's a feather in your cap if you have these.
Well, the fear is, the, the, if we put in that all city contracts will have OSHA training, you can't probably get a contract for your grass coat if it's in the summer, or, you know, certain things that you're not going to be able to get. And that might even be true on some of your bigger contracts.
Can we put a threshold as to what dollar figure that, just that would trigger?
You know, the magnitude of the contract, for the case there to be a, a large company, you know, well, we look, we do that brother's thing, right? Over a hundred, a hundred grand, you know, uh, they, they do have to show a record of that.
Yeah, you, you can do that. The, the concept that we sort of worked with was that we're trying to get more bids, not less, but that we want to be able to, when it's justified, not necessarily go with the lowest bid, because there may be circumstances when the lowest evaluated bid is better than the lowest actual bid.
Yeah.
And that's what the criteria, that's where the criteria, including the OSHA training and the drug testing and satisfactory performance of previous contracts.
So, all of those items would then be considered pluses in the evaluated?
That's right.
And that's, that's the second part. But, see, I've talked publicly to those contractors, and I sent a letter to probably thirty. And some used to do a lot of business with us, some for years, you know, like twenty-five or a year. And some quit, you know, some were, some of them have picked up bid packages. And we thought we were going to have a bunch of bidders, they just didn't quit in. And a continuing theme, when I called in, I probably got seven in on my desk I need to call next day or two. But the continuing theme is, people are getting, a contractor gets the bid, and then they eat itself the change orders. And by the time they're through, they're up there past the, the next couple of bids, maybe, or at least in that vicinity. And, and I, I, I've had it with change orders. Uh, and, and I think that it's a slippery slope, and we've been in it. Uh, and I know that's in our evaluation now.
And that's one of the things that will go in the evaluation that we're going to be required to do. And, and basically, the, the concept, when, when you do evaluated bids instead of this lowest bid, you have to, in your bid package, you have to tell them what the evaluation criteria are. And that's what that list, and what it says is, if, if, anytime there's a bid within fifteen percent of the lowest bid, and the bidder has, I think we said seventy percent of these evaluated bid criteria, which are the criteria that we believe elevates a contractor, then the city can use or that evaluated bid rather than necessarily the lowest bid. So, it's trying to get the, the most bang for our buck. Sure. Even, it's recognizing that lowest is not always best.
We have to do that for, for the public. We have to, to make attempts to get the best job possible and not have overruns all the time about this.
Well, this is part of it, because on that evaluated bid criteria, we say satisfactory completion of previous contracts. And having these evaluations in the record for each contract previously performed allows us to say whether they were satisfactory or not.
Is there, have we looked since we've talked about adding language, or if it's legal to even add language, that says if, at any time you are in breach of an existing contract you're performing for the city, that that would, that would halt any work you're currently doing on any other project for the city?
We haven't looked at it, you'd have to, you'd have to put that in every contract that you did.
Well, I mean, I just think we've got some issues where we've had some contractors in breach.
I'd say put, put that statement in, and, and they know it upfront, they're probably not going to bid a job if they're already had a problem with it.
Because that's part of, I think, what, if you ask the general public, would you use a contractor you've ever had a problem with before, and you possibly even had, had litigation, would you use them again? The answer from the public would be no.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure if that's necessarily something, I think the public would probably be shocked if they probably were going with people that we potentially have to go after legally.
Well, one of the places that comes into play is back to.
Be shocked, probably.
The concept that we've got to qualify people before they have bid, and, and somebody has breached or not performed a previous contract, then the city manager has the discretionary authority to ban them from bidding any future contracts. And that's the way we thought we were going to address it. You know, you could have a, a situation, as you pointed out, Mr., where you could have a, two contracts at one same time, and you breach one, and, and theoretically be able to finish the second one, but you're not going to be allowed to bid on any future ones after that. As long, and as long as you're performing properly on the second one, not in breach on that one, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. But we certainly then don't want to authorize them to bid on any additional contracts. But again, that's, that's just my view of it, we can do it however you want.
That's actually, I, I would concur with that.
Well, I'm pleading with these bidders, you know, give us another shot, you know. I mean, you know, I can't guarantee you the work, but I can guarantee you no work if you don't put a package in, you know, to try to get the job.
And obviously, the more bids we can get, the better for the city and the better for our citizens, because.
And we want our bidders to feel we're giving them a fair shake.
Oh. We want them to be low, and we also want them to perform properly and not have a disorder of numbers.
Probably would see.
Yeah, we all get it, I mean, we all get that part, that's for sure.
Okay, well, that's a long-winded answer, but that's, that's what this actual ordinance that we've got force right now is.
Okay.
I, I'm for that for sure.
All favor?
Aye.
opposed, last time? And we're, we got a good monitoring system in place, city manager very adept of working with all the staff to put this together, so.
I want to thank the staff, because there's a lot of hands in this, and they're, it's, it's. I want to say delicate, it's, it's tricky because of what Jim said upfront. You don't want to eliminate small, small businesses on smaller contracts, but like you all have emphasized, we want to get best quality for the best price. And I, I think this does it. Like everything else, it'll be iterative, we'll, we'll run this, we'll see how, see how it works, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. If there's ordinance changes that we recommend, or you all see.
Okay, thanks for the work on it, by you and the staff. I'll be. Out of deed.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the city of Ashland, Kentucky, requiring the preparation of a fiscal note for all, for any items submitted to the Ashland Board of City Commissioners for approval of the expenditure of city funds either directly or indirectly.
Second.
The discussion, I think, is very important, as said and as expected. We appreciate the permission of Perkins bringing that to the table.
We've had a lot of positive response today publicly, just with the citizens reaching out to me, thanking me, and thanking you all for allowing this to move forward so quickly, because we all are committed to transparency, and I think this is just further proof we're on the right track.
Thanks again. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Out of deed.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the city of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting proposal of H. thirty R. Inc. to provide professional engineering and rate development services for a cost of service, COS study of rates for both water and sewer systems in an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand dollars for Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Someone?
Second.
I know that, that is the low, low bid, and in talking with our finance director today, they are doing water and sewer vote, and Mr. Grub, you, you made a statement relative to.
They have done a previous study, so they have a lot of our data and stuff.
They, they have done that, they, they got that, but, but you're talking in terms of, through the public service?
Public service commission.
Commission, that, but doing this in this manner is, is a little bit more expensive, is a necessary thing.
I've got to come back with one comment also. This, this bid and the next bid were discussed at the Capitol Projects Committee. Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Clark were able to hear that and have, have some really good discussions, asked some good questions, and it helped propel this, for solemn and a compliment, the Capitol Projects Committee for the work they're doing on the.
That's, that's why we've been together. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Out of deed.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the city of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting proposal of LG Bay, LG, LJB, Inc. to provide professional engineering services for design and preventing the replacement of water lines in various areas of the city's distribution system in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-six thousand dollars for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations.
Someone?
Second.
And again, this one, in my reviews with, with staff and city manager, this is actually an offshoot of Woolworth. They have an office back in Ashland, and we've got a local engineer who's manning that office. That's always good, when we can hire local people. And this particular, or as you see this promote, it, it lends itself for us to do what we can do and save as much money as we can with our crews, we add new crew in our, in our water distribution department, and it should help us greatly in holding the cost down each year and get as much replacement done as possible. So I would forward to work on this out here. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Out of age.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the city of Ashland, Kentucky, mending Part Three, Conditions of Employment, Section C, disciplinary action of policies and procedures, compensation plan and classification plan, as adopted by ordinance number fifty-one, series of two thousand and seventeen, as previously amended.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Out of mine.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, ordinance, the city of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the job description of position of city engineer as a replacement for the position of city engineer and Capitol Program Director in the Department of Engineering, eliminating the position of Director of Public Services and Utility Operations in the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, creating the Department of Utilities and adopting the job description for the position of Director of Utilities, creating the Department of Public Services, and mending the authorized positions listing to reflect these changes to the policies and procedures, compensation plan and classification plan, as adopted by ordinance number fifty-one, series of two thousand and seventeen, as previously amended.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? Good move, major. It helped operations greatly, and we're standing eternal, I fully support that. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Out of Jay.
We have a proposal for a candidate, Mark Blair, thirteen thirteen Lexington Avenue, Ashland, Kentucky, to the Ashland Federal Department Board, dominated by the mayor for the consent approval of the board.
Someone?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Close lights on. Thank you all. I have a couple of openings. Mr. Paul, we still have a planning, planning convention, an opening?
No, sir, we're.
We're okay?
On that now, we may have some more appointments to make over there.
Okay.
A little transition happening, but right now, we're okay.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir.
Hi. I'm Barry.
Come on, Barry. We usually, we usually do this beginning of our meeting, we have a, a time frame, but you came in late, but I'm gonna give you an opportunity to have a couple minutes, or whatever.
Well, I, I had to go down and get my bread, because it's raining, so I can't hear.
Okay, I got you.
Hi, I'm Barry.
Uh, Barry, what, what, you want to present something to us tonight?
Um, I was wanting to add some important questions.
Okay.
And concerns, because a lot of people have been talking to me, and, um, from Capexburg to Ashland, even in the tri-state areas, even all over the United States of America.
Yeah.
Okay. Thing is, I'm the one that is all over social media. I've seen, heard, know a lot of things, but thing is that I know that the city, have city ordinance, and then there's the state, have the state ordinance, then there's the federal, have the federal ordinance. But the only thing that I have to ask is when is the city, the state, and the federal be able to get on the same page and be for the people instead of being for what is unnecessary, is not a necessity, you know, and it's not a need. Like, you have these buildings, you have these corporate infrastructure, you have the economy, you have all these inflation, deflation, the prices, then you have all these people that do drugs, then you have all these wars. You have so much chaos going on in the world in the streets of today. But the thing is, is that even all this is going on, is you have that he said, she said, he said, the point blame, and the point finger rejecting the blame of somebody else, not checking any responsibility beyond actions, and all these other things. And it's not just the poor, the, the rich, or the elite, it's not just any of that. You can't put a class on somebody just because of the way they are, or their background history, the way they live. And education is not what it used to be several years ago. Now, everything is going to computers, and a lot of businesses closing their shop. And then you've got the real estate agents, they act like they're going to Wompers because they don't know how to sell product, that the building, to be able to sell it right. Now, you have all these costs, and you've got these cutbacks, you've got these uprisings, then you've got the part-time workers that go back, you know, and they get cut because of labor laws, and it doesn't make any sense. So with all this being said, from George Shulley, Barry Hales, one and only voice of the people, and I speak for everyone, and the thing that I gotta say, that my people gotta say, which is my profitable organization, non-profitable organization, which is over a thousand people worldwide. Even though we're online, we know what's going on. Even though we can be a welfare or SSI, we know what's going on. Even though we can be down and disgrated, even though we should be lifted up and be seen as equals amongst our own peers, the only thing is, is that justice has to be made. People have to be done right, and everybody should have faith in one another, because if people have no faith in one another, if people does not do what's right between one another, then the only thing that we're doing is destroying ourselves internally and externally. So therefore, we do not get a fair hand, we do not get a break, we do not get advancement. The only thing that we're doing is just staring, cheating, transping down, which should be rising up. Now, if things keep going, where's the coin? In several years from now, about five to ten years, there'll be nothing left, and this whole town will be nothing but a ghost town. And I can see this within a bird's eye view, and I can feel this within my heart, I can feel this within every fiber of my being. It's just, you know, we are intelligent beings, we are heartfelt people, we have a conscience, we have a subconscious, we have a spirit, we have a God, we have all these different things. But the thing is, it's always about materialism, monopoly, it's always about the setbacks, the cuts, and all this other stuff, and I'm talking about corporate, I'm talking about city, I'm talking about state, and it's just plain wrong. And there's so many people in this world, like, you have all these homeless people, they're all over the streets. You see it in LA, downtown LA, I used to live there. You see it in Indiana, I used to live there too. You see it all over the United States of America, then you see the politics, and then the right wing, left wing conservatives, and then independents, liberals, and journalists, the publicists, and then you see the House of Congress, then you see all these different things, but you know what? The thing is, there is no truth, there is no trust, there is no love, there is no faith, there is no meetness, no humility, no confidence, not even sorrow or sympathy. The only thing that there is, is money. And the thing about money, money ain't what it used to be about fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago, okay? Back in the day, our founding fathers, okay, Washington, George Washington, he's not even actually the real founding fathers, George Washington is the guy next to the founding fathers. The guy that was actually the founding fathers, George Washington, he didn't want it to decay, George Washington. But our founding fathers vowed this country to be independent, and really, it's wrong. We're all controlled by a monopoly system, and really, the monopoly system should control everything.
Mr. Hales.
And the thing is that love, love is more powerful than money.
Your time's up.
And if people knew that love is more powerful than money, they're gonna be peaceful and nice.
Oh, your time's up, you made some great points, and I appreciate you being here tonight, and hopefully people will think about some of the things you brought up, you know, we are. I don't want to be there. We're there.
No, because I just want to be reported.
Well, the only thing I'm saying is that we need to have being independent, as long as we do.
Well, I could agree more. Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, yeah, I tell my people this all the time.
Well, I appreciate.
And they listen to me, everyone listens, so I wanted to just.
I'm glad you came, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And it's my pleasure.
Good to be here.
And, and, and it's, it's nice to be able to meet some volunteers, but yes, I'm afraid, I can't help it. But the way with Trump and, and Mark Zuckerberg and all them, I know all about that, and I care less. It has nothing to do with us, we can be an independent state, even though the state government has more authority than actually federal government, it's creeping on, but not by us.
I can't owe you that, I've gotta stop you there. All right, thank you very much, Barry.
You're welcome.
Barry, what's your address, so we know?
Hi.
What's your address, oh, we need to send you something, what's your address here in Ashland? Where do you, where do you live?
Oh, I live at four nine hundred Lot Three, Fourth Street, in the trade park.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'm just building up the whole crowd of people.
Good for you, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, what happened?
Most of you are done.
Most of you are done?
Make most of you turn.
Second.
Thank you all for being here. Return.